So, all right, so let's just go through the agenda for a minute. We have two minutes to go through. I think it'd be a good idea to just get them out of the way, otherwise we'll just... Is everybody okay with that?
I agree.
Okay. So, anybody's minute issues? Anyone?
Well, I had just from I had on the eleven ten. One, second one.
The second one, okay.
Yeah, the one, um, I guess it's the one. Like this paragraph down, it starts Sam.
Recording in progress.
It starts Sam, representing Kierzner. That's, it wasn't really a sentence. So, I thought maybe it should say, uh, representing Kierzner Energy Company that installs solar energy systems had a proposal for a much larger system than allowed under the proposed ordinance.
Or even just came forward to speak or...
Yeah, that's fine.
Because that's, that's...
Because it wasn't like...
The same comment is not a sentence.
It wasn't like...
Yeah. So, will you send this to David?
And I had a similar sort of comment on the eleven twenty seven meeting minutes. What is that, fifth paragraph? Uh, second sentence, the consensus of the board was de-acceptable. Seems like nonsense to me, sir.
This was that, this was...
Yeah, was that, this was acceptable or that. This proposal was acceptable.
Yeah. Could you send that to David? Because, uh...
Yeah.
And actually, I have, I have one more question.
Okay.
Uh, in the eleven twenty seven minutes, the one, two, three, four, uh, fourth paragraph, it says, discuss, the board discussed large solar systems that would change the language in the public hearing on November tenth. Well, this was already the minutes from the twenty seven.
Yeah, well, that's clearly wrong.
So...
I think, yeah, I think the, the minutes for eleven ten should be actually say for eleven twenty four.
Well, that was, uh, that was Thanksgiving though.
Yeah, that was Thanksgiving.
Oh, when did we get there?
All right, so I've got an eleven ten here. That was the one that Hebe did.
Oh, she, yeah, she's got...
Well, we have two sentences there.
Yeah.
So, so this one is referring to the November, the eleven ten, November tenth. Is that inaccurate?
Maybe this is supposed to be October, towards that.
Oh, I bet you that's what it is.
No, I don't know. Is that right?
Yeah, the one that says eleven ten is eleven ten.
Okay.
So, this should just be a ten.
Ten. All right, so...
And then that would make the...
Yes, that's what it is.
So, Tim, do you want to take down what David Khan said? And, and just send, send these three things to...
Yeah, okay.
To David, so...
Okay, so what are we suggesting about this last change?
That, that the ten, that the date of the eleven twenty seven is really, should be ten twenty seven. Because I don't think we bet on eleven twenty seven.
Oh, we certainly didn't, yeah.
Ah, ah, that's a good catch.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm smarter than I thought.
Yeah. It's always a good sign.
And then, and then I guess...
Yes. This makes sense now.
So, then it makes sense.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. He, Hebe, I guess the only other thing I'd say, maybe, maybe you should put at the end what David does, you know, the hearing was closed, and then submit, you know, at the end of the minutes.
Respectfully submitted, you mean?
Yeah, just put what David does there at the end.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I, I asked him to clean it up.
Yeah, okay.
But I, so, uh, this time I will record what time we end.
All right, yeah. All right, so for the, are there any other minutes? So, um, for the...
Hi, um, on the minutes of, uh, the ten. Um, again, on that sentence that starts with Sam.
Yeah.
The second sentence, I was thinking it might want to say that he stated that they were currently working on a proposed system uh, for Scott and Lisa Bailey that would be capable of producing up to. I don't know whether we want the name or we don't want the names.
I don't, I'm neutral. I don't, I don't think it matters one way or the other.
I don't.
But what do people think?
I mean, it was very specific to have...
Yeah, well, it would be fine to put the names, it's public.
Right. I think, I think that's fine.
Yes, so just add Scott and Lisa, Dave.
I think it's mine, zero percent.
Got that?
You want to vote to approve the minutes such to those changes?
Yeah, we just let him get that down. And did you get the, the other change that, that David?
Yeah, I got...
All right, so for the first one, which was now, has now changed to ten twenty four, is that right?
Ten twenty seven.
Ten twenty seven.
Ten twenty seven, okay. Okay, so let's vote on the ten twenty seven. I'd like to make, um, a motion to amend those minutes, uh, to, uh, pass those minutes as amended by several people. Is there a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, unanimously passed. All right, and then on the... What's the date of the...
Eleven ten.
Yeah, and then November tenth. This, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the minutes, those minutes as amended by several people. Um, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, all those opposed, unanimous? Okay. So, is this, um, is this thing working? Can you tell?
I have... Hey, Sam, can you hear us?
Hey, hey, everyone, I can hear you all. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Loud and clear.
Great.
Thank you.
Good to be with you all again. Hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving.
You too, welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Okay.
My pleasure.
Let's get started. One thing of all, before we get down into the meat of the thing. One thing I wanted to go over was our schedule. So, we have the meeting tonight. And then, uh, our next meeting is next week. Please correct me if any of this is wrong. Um, and that's, we have the floodplain amendment hearing that night, which I, you never know, but I don't think that'll take very long. But basically, then, we have two more meetings available before the amendment would have to go to print. Which means that we have two meetings before we have two hearings. So, one thing, everything else aside, one thing I'm concerned about is, that's a pretty short amount of time to make a major change at this point, and I just wanted to...
John, um, can you tell me, what dates are you saying? I thought...
Yeah, so twelve one is tonight.
Yep, twelve eight?
Twelve eight.
Twelve, it's a week from...
Right.
Next week. Then is Christmas. We don't meet around Christmas.
You don't meet on the twenty ninth?
Uh, we, we haven't. We could...
I don't think it's prefer not to, but...
Yeah, depends how many people are away.
But, but this is what's scheduled. We have tonight, next week, and then we have, uh, January tenth, which would be the first hearing, public hearing. And this is, goes right up to the edge. First public hearing...
Uh, January twelfth, maybe?
Uh, the, I got these from David. Is it the twelfth?
It's a Thursday, yeah.
The twelfth is a Thursday.
Okay, so then, and he, I had twenty four, so the twelfth and the twenty sixth. And he said that on February seventh, it has to, that's when these go to print. So, um, we don't have a lot of time. Um, anyway, uh, I wanted to point that out. And, um, let's go over any questions that, or statements that people on the board have. Raise your hand and...
Okay, John, just, just for clarity, so you said that on the twelfth of January, we have a, a first public hearing. The twenty sixth would be available for another public hearing if we made changes on that twelfth.
We have, we have to have the second available.
Yes, right, so if we made changes, we would need the twenty sixth, and then we're done.
The twenty sixth of what?
It's January.
Oh, I see, yep.
Because, uh, February seventh, according to David Robbins, was when it go...
No, it's state law. You have to have a convey to the town clerk five weeks in advance of town meeting.
Right, and that's the date.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, does anybody want to start with their questions or anything?
So, I actually called a bunch of people that had given us feedback and asked what they might, um, what they might think. And, and I'm glad to see Carl is here, so I'll let you speak for yourself. Uh, but the question that I was basically asking is, the proposal that we put out for the first public hearing envisioned, uh, twenty thousand square feet of solar panels. And the very first person that came to us said, geez, you know, maybe five acres, maybe five ti, uh, ten times that is the minimum economically viable. And so I, I wanted to, it was clear that the board was concerned. Is the town going to be upset if we bump it up by a factor of ten? So, I, I called some people. Most, I spoke to, I spoke to Steve Campbell, Ross McIntyre, Ray Clark, Sergeane Dooley, and, uh, and Carl Fristenberg. The sense was, five acres seemed like a good idea. I don't know whether it's worth going down exactly what everybody said. People were concerned about screening, that, or not having them be in your, in your eye. Several people said that they wanted to, uh, need to figure out how to make provisions for a net zero future. Um, I, I pushed several people to say, what if we said ten acres? What would you say to that? And, um, most people that gave me an answer said, yeah, I suppose. So, so that's, that's the feedback I got. You want to chime in, Carl, and...
Well, I'm not really sure where the, where the board is on this whole issue, but I think what I said to you, Rich, in the phone call, was, it's really a matter of degree. I'm a supporter, my family's a supporter of solar energy. The question really is, how much is enough? Where do you stop? And what's in the commercial zone versus residential zone? And that, that was the issue, is I understood it with the current, uh, discussion about Scott Bailey's plan. Is that or is it not in the, in the commercial zone? So, I guess that's kind of an equivocal answer, but in general, I would support more solar in town. And I think that the issue the board really needs to be focused on is the size and location of whatever you, you decide on. Because really, after the size and the location, it's, it's a matter of the, um, terms of the solar arrangement, whether it's a co-op or some sort of commercial vendor. Because after the electricity is produced, it all goes into the grid. And then the question is, what happens to it after it goes into the grid? How do you account for it and that sort of thing? So, in terms of line and planning issues, for me, me, Charlotte and I, it's really a matter of degree, size and location. And five thousand seems, or five acres seems possible, reasonable, but it would depend where it is.
So, would you say it would depend where it is? Have you thought about that?
Where?
Yeah.
Specifically? No, I know there are concerns about the, the lines that carry the electricity coming from this and how their, their capacity. But I think there are locations in town, people talk about the gravel pit just nearby. It seemed like an ideal location. Whether or not that's available is a different question.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I mean general locations, because we can't spick, we can't, uh, pick, oh, we want to hear, we want to hear. But I, I'm getting a sense that you're pretty comfortable with it.
You know? A, a bigger array, if it, if it doesn't violate other principles that this board operates.
Yeah, well, that's sort of, that's always the rub, right?
Right.
I mean, well, I, I spoke to a, I spoke to a bunch of people as well, and I got contacted. And I got a mix of responses. And one of the things, you know, you said you're, you're, uh, you're, you're supportive but equivocal. And, and I got people who said no. But I also got people who said that they support it, they think it's a good idea. But when it, when it, exactly that, that term, when you, or that point where you get to, well, where and how, they got a lot more equivocal. You know, like, it's like a general thing, yes, I support it, and, and it's a great idea. But they got uncomfortable when the specifics were, were addressed. And that's, that's our challenge.
Right. And I, I spoke to just a couple people that said that, no, five acres is totally inappropriate. The other thing I was going to say was, I really wanted to thank Rich Mayne for his research on this and sort of put things in...
Yeah, that, that was very helpful.
Better perspective. I mean, it seems like twenty thousand square feet is ample. And what we need to do, you know, what would be beneficial to Lime. The problem I have is that we put five acres of solar panels in Lime, but they don't benefit Lime at all. There's no benefits, does it have?
So, I'm, I'm a member of this new committee, that's the LEAC, the Lime Electric Aggregation Committee. And they're putting, there's statewide legislation that can be, let's group net metering feed into this ever-source grid and allow for bargaining for better rates. And that actually would be a way to have Lime participate in the benefits of this larger group net metered project.
So, Mark, Mark, um, when, when we spoke, um, are, are you involved in that as well?
Um, I'm not directly on that committee, no.
Okay, because what, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, Jim, you were saying that Jim Nurse was looking into the, the possibilities of how it could feed into the town.
Yeah.
And, and that we were about six, maybe six months away from knowing if and whether that, that would be a workable thing.
Yeah, my understanding is that the committee that Hebe mentioned is, um, studying the issue, and it would have to come up for a vote at town meeting as to whether or not Lime would, uh, participate. And, um, Jim was not certain whether they'd be able to make the deadline for this coming meeting, so it might be next year's, uh, twenty twenty four meeting instead. And I guess just one comment on that. I think, um, you know, a project like you're talking about, um, at the Bailey property, could potentially feed into that, but I think it would have to go through, um, a middleman. There, there's a, uh, uh, organization called the, I think it's called the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire or something like that. They aggregate municipal load and then go out and try to find suppliers. And, and so I think they would serve as like the most likely middleman in terms of, um, making sure that the balance of supply needed by folks in Lime would be met. And so I'm not sure that Lime would be able to contract directly with the solar farm. I think it would have to be kind of secure.
It has to go through that, that community. They've also provided a lot of the model language for...
Yeah.
More articles and all of the...
Right.
Organizing stuff that needs to go forward.
Yep.
I can speak to that if it's helpful now.
Sure.
Um, so both options would be available. Certainly Lime can set up a community power program, and we could contract with Lime through the community power program. But the simpler option would be just to contract directly, uh, with Lime, uh, having Lime serve as a group net metering off-taker for the project, um, which is, uh, a, a structure that, that we use, for example, uh, with the city of Manchester, with Manchester serving as the sole off-taker for our project on their landfill. So, no need for the middleman if Lime doesn't want it, and wants the simpler structure without, uh, rolling this project into a community power program.
Yeah, then...
Mark, is, is that consistent with your understanding?
Um, sort of. So, in New Hampshire, um, well, first of all, I'm, I'm not quite sure how large this project is. So, like, what's the proposed capacity of this project?
I think it was one megawatt.
One, one megawatt.
One megawatt, okay. Yeah, so, um, a one megawatt system in New Hampshire can net meter kind of with anybody, anybody within the same utility service territory. And so that could be Lime residents, um, it could be some of the town's load. So, so, yeah, that, that could be a way to do it.
So, so that you think that's feasible?
It's feasible, but we all, you know, I should also note, though, that a fair amount of the town load may already be met by onsite rooftop PV, and so there may not be much residual town load that would feed into, um, a group net metering project.
So, if that's the case, is there an alternative where people in Lime could, could benefit from this?
Sure, yeah, I mean, anybody who is, uh...
Ever Source.
Ever Source customer could, could sign up.
So, how would that be structured?
It's, it's just an administrative thing through the New Hampshire PUC and, and Ever Source. You know, you just fill out some forms, um, sign up. There would presumably be some sort of subscription fee that, um, that the project would, would want. And so that, that arrangement would have to be worked out between the project owner and the subscribers. But, um, but the administrative details are already set up, uh, at Ever Source, so it's not, it's not all that complicated.
Okay.
I believe, I believe Sam said the last meeting, meeting, uh, they don't do that. There's too much paperwork for individual people in the town. So, they don't really do that.
Yeah, could be.
Is that right, Sam?
So, the, a community solar project certainly adds, uh, complexity and administrative costs. So, we don't do it as frequently. There are also greater risks associated with community solar projects, uh, because, let's say Lime is a sole off-taker for the project. It's pretty, uh, low risk that Lime is not going to pay us. It's higher risk that you're not going to get paid by, uh, community solar, uh, residential off-takers. So, there are certain higher costs associated, um, with those projects that are particularly tricky in New Hampshire, given how skinny the margins are in these projects. But it is a structure that we're familiar with, we're comfortable with. And if, if that's where the planning board wants us to go, um, certainly we will explore every opportunity for, you know, ensuring that, you know, Lime residents get first crack at, at being an off-taker.
Okay. Uh, other questions?
Well, excuse my ignorance, but I don't understand. Okay, if, if people in Lime are going to benefit, does it cost them money? And how do they get paid? I don't understand how that works.
Hello, yeah, I'm happy to talk to that. So, um, the way that the net metering credit system works, um, for, uh, New Hampshire net metering credits, uh, projects, the net metering credit value is pegged to the supply rate. The default supply rate that Ever Source sets with the PUC every six months. So, that net metering credit has a value. Right now, it's about twenty cents. It fluctuates greatly. Eighteen months ago, it was like eight cents. Now, it's twenty cents because of all the energy volatility that's, uh, twenty twenty-two has experienced. So, let's say, uh, the project generates net metering credits that are worth twenty cents. We would then sell those credits at a discount to, uh, off-takers. So, uh, we would sell, for example, uh, a Lime resident, uh, twenty cents of electricity, so twenty cents per KWH, uh, at, at nineteen cents. So, you're saving a cent per KWH. And in New Hampshire, you have the option of either seeing those net metering credits as an on-bill credit or, or some project owners, uh, just choose to send cash to their, uh, off-takers. So, in this sense, if Lime residents sign up as off-takers for this project, they will see direct benefits in the form of electricity savings. And so with the town, for that matter, if the town saved, signed up as an off-taker, that's in addition to the, you know, the tax revenues that, uh, the town would see through, through a pilot that we would voluntarily enter into with the town.
What would, could you explain the tax benefits?
For the town?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, there was some back and forth, uh, at, at the last meeting about this, whether, uh, between David and myself, about whether Lime, uh, has exempted, uh, a, a system of the size of ours from any taxation. That's somewhat beside the point, because we would voluntarily enter into a payment of taxes for a project like this. Um, and a project of this size, the, the town would see pilot revenues of forty to sixty thousand dollars over, uh, the course of, of twenty years. And, and, and beyond that, uh, as, uh, the, the project life continues out past twenty years. But typically speaking, pilots aren't signed beyond twenty years.
Okay.
So, just figuring it out, we might, if you use five hundred kilowatt hours a month, you might save five dollars a month, is that right? You might get paid five dollars a month?
Uh, so if you, if you, if your usage was five hundred kilowatt hours, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so you'd save five dollars a month?
Yeah.
And it wouldn't cost anything, or it would cost something for the...
Uh, it wouldn't cost anything.
It wouldn't cost any. So, you guys build a five hundred thousand dollar system?
I'm having a little trouble hearing you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Speak up.
So, Kierzner would build a system, I, I, in front of I read, they cost around five hundred thousand dollars for a one megawatt. So, you get paid...
No, the system would cost considerably more than five hundred K to, to, to build.
Okay.
It would cost more along the order of one point five to two million dollars to build.
Okay. So, I have a, a question.
Sure.
As I understand it, this, this credit, whatever it is, how much it is, that credit would be for Ever Source customers, not...
Correct.
New Hampshire co-op customers.
Right.
So, in terms of...
Correct.
Benefiting the town, this benefits, I don't know what the breakdown is in terms of percent, Ever Source to percent, New Hampshire co-op.
Does anybody know?
But this potentially would benefit, let's say, for the sake of argument, would benefit half the town, not the other half of the town.
The, whatever that percentage of Ever Source, yeah.
Right, right.
I, I think it's closer to eighty percent.
I, I think it's, I think it's more than, you know, more than fifty percent, but I don't know.
Eighty percent Ever Source, really?
Yeah, yeah, I'm pretty sure.
That's pretty high.
So, you get, get the point of the question.
But it, it, I, I mean, I, I don't know how that would work. Would any, would it cover every Ever Source? How, how would the, supposing everybody in Lime who's on Ever Source wanted to be involved in this, could, could it accommodate that?
Potentially. I mean, we, we could work with the town to explore how, how it would make that offering to, to residents. It would depend on the average usage of, of a, of a household in Lime, uh, how much electricity, you know, your average Lime household is using. A project of this size is going to produce, you know, give or take two million kilowatt hours a year. So, that's, that's, that's the, uh, the pie of, uh, credits that, that you have available for, uh, distribution, so to speak.
Okay, other, any other discussion or, or questions for, for Sam, or, or just comments on, from the, from the... I'll get to you in a minute, just wanted to give the board a...
Sure, yeah.
So, this sounds like a, a little bit of a change in what we're being told from last time.
Yeah.
Because I think last time we were told that it needed to, the off-takers needed to be either, uh, low, moderate income housing project or, um, or the town itself.
Yeah, that's my reflection, too.
Am I understanding that, that, that you're saying that you would do... Am I understanding that you're saying that you would do something different now, Sam?
I'm sorry for any confusion. Certainly didn't want to create the impression that I said one thing last meeting and I'm singing a different tune this time around. I think our preference would be either for off take to be limited to the town or low and moderate income off take. But it's the planning board's desire that the off take for this project be opened up beyond that to town residents. And that's a conditional requirement for the planning board, then we can work with that.
All right, Vicki?
I just wanted to interject. We're not reviewing your project. What we're talking about is changing what the zoning proposal would allow. So it would be that we would allow larger projects if they're made available to Lime residents. So it's not your project necessarily, it's any project that were to come in.
Understood.
Right, and to that, I mean, this is a concern of mine. I mean, it's really helpful to have your project, because it puts it in front of us. And I appreciate that, and thank you for it. The challenge for us on such short timeline is we would have to come up with a lot of guidelines. We'd have to choose an area or areas, probably different requirements for how these were regulated than what we have now. My concern is if we rush this, basically two or three meetings, after we took all that time, I guess my question is, in connection with being hesitant of just kind of ramming this through because of this one project, what is the board's view about working with what we've worked on all year and that we've actually vetted quite a bit? And then taking the time to actually do this, do our due diligence on this? I mean, I don't think we can do this with a reasonable amount of due diligence, aside from the merits or demerits. I'm not talking about the merits or demerits. I just don't think we have the time to do due diligence on this that we put into what we already have.
I agree with that completely. Was it, or is no way we get this done before a kind of meeting? And so my view would be, we ought to do a good job, and we ought to, we can wait a year.
Yeah, I mean, that's my view.
So, so John, would you think about, would we think about putting before the town what we've already done, as it is, that we finished? And then next, the following year, and then that?
Yeah, I mean, I just don't think we have the time.
Well, except that probably kills this project.
I don't know. But I mean, I can't, you know, there's a lot I like. The reason, you know, we're having this extra meeting is because we all said, oh, this is compelling. But as I went over the challenges for this, you know, for us to basically do a sloppy job because we like one project is not the way to do business, I don't think. Is that right, Sam, that that would kill the project?
Almost certainly.
Okay.
Yeah, just for this year.
What's the benefit of having, of moving forward with the existing line? If we think we're going to amend it in a significant way a year later?
But we don't know. We don't know that we will.
Well, yeah, but why go forward with what we have if we were thinking? It seems to me that the posture that we're in is one where we have substantial uncertainty about what this statute, what this ordinance ought to say. And if that's the case, why wouldn't we just defer putting anything forward and work on it until we're comfortable that we like, we like what we have and we think it will be more durable?
It's, I mean, that's an option. I don't feel that way. I think we have something good, it'll give the town, and as Sam said, even they prefer a town that has an ordinance, because it's just better. People know what they're working with. We put in all this time, and everybody on this board supported it. It seems like, why not? If we want to, if, I don't know what the outcome will be. I mean, I got some very negative responses to this, as well as some positive and ambivalent responses. But we did a lot of reasonable feedback to get what we got. And I would want to get more feedback than just, you know, who I spoke to, Rich spoke to, and the people who've come. Yeah.
I think that the effort to do like a community solar here is a reason to consider the larger project as a, you know, a good thing for Lime, because we had people working on looking at the feasibility. And then if they say, yeah, it looks like there are enough people interested, then they would want to come forward with a larger project. So I guess my question is, like Tahivi, since you're in that group, how soon do you, would you all see yourselves coming forward, looking to do a project? And kind of that said, you're looking at the same places that Sam is looking at. There's only so many places that are big.
This group's not doing a project. What they're doing is setting up the structure so that everything, all the wheels are greased and all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted for any group in Lime who wanted to participate, for Lime to participate in this statewide community energy.
So it wouldn't necessarily be buying power in Lime, it'd be buying power from other places in the state that's solar?
It's enabling Lime to be part of the bargaining group.
Okay.
My understanding was that this committee that was just formed is that their mission is to evaluate this new program
Right.
and to summarize it and to make a recommendation to the select board or to the town that then would be put forward in, at town meeting. And there'd be a vote as to whether people, whether the town wants to participate in this new
Yes, exactly.
this new program.
This group is not actually building anything or bargaining.
And you wouldn't need to. You could just buy in in the statewide pool that's available. I get it. Okay.
I mean, the energy committee did get a warrant article passed that the town was aiming for net zero 2030 for electrical consumption. And this sort of is on that path. So enabling through this work to have the larger installations in town sort of dovetails neatly with then the next year being able to bargain to buy some of this power.
Okay, so I don't really follow that, because it seems like if we're trying to be net zero here in this town, we should be using our, what, our own solar and our own EVs and that type of thing. It's, but we don't have a, you said you guys aren't into a project. What you want to do is look at us getting into a buying cooperative to purchase solar that may be produced someplace else, not here.
Right. But having a project like this in town would be, you know, in line with the goals of the state.
Yeah, I read somewhere, or I read, I guess on the computer, that one megawatt will supply, there's a range, but between 500 and 790 houses a year. So that would almost do the whole town, one megawatt.
I don't think so.
I think that's too high. I
It's not right. I think it's more like
I thought Sam said 200.
200.
Yeah, that was me. I don't know whether that's right.
Well, on the computer, I googled, you know, just on Google. They, one said that the conservative estimate for, I don't know, it was 700, one of the quotes was, one megawatt will power 796.3 northwest homes for a year. That's in the northwest. I mean, obviously, it depends on where you are, but, you know, it sounds like it. And then somewhere else, it said it would do at least 500 houses a year. So I don't have any houses that are a lot.
So again, let's go back to what Vicki was saying, because of course, we're talking about this one project. But what we have to do is create something for the whole town. Not just for one project, although it's really helpful to have this project to guide us. So we, I mean, the way, here's one approach. We can work as hard as we can over the next two or three meetings to see if we can come up with something. I'd be surprised if we could. Or we could just say, it's not practical. And I'd like to get a sense of the board about whether everybody wants to put in that work and try for it for this year. Yeah, Rich?
Yeah, I wanted to just indicate that this memo that I sent out to David, I had some kilowatt and megawatt errors in the memo.
That helps me a lot.
And so there were four places where I was referring to kilowatts when I really meant to say megawatts. And so I sent him a revised memo, but I didn't realize he wasn't working this week. So I actually have copies of the revised memo. But basically, one of the things that I found was, you know, there are different models for doing solar. I mean, we can, you know, homeowners can do their own. There are investor type programs, which I think is what Sam's is, company is involved in. And then I think that something that, you know, could be an offshoot of the committee that Tahivi's on is, you know, locally funded and supported and subscribed group net metering solar. And from talking with Catamount, that was what they've generally been doing. And, you know, in Vermont, they're under more restrictions, even though it's a green state. Their systems are limited to 0.15 megawatts or 0.5 megawatts. So they can go up to 0.5 megawatts, and they actually have to make a PUC application to do that. I don't know whether we have to do that in New Hampshire or not. But I guess what I'm thinking is that, yeah, we've done a lot of good work on our ordinance. And our ordinance also complies with the max lot coverage. And we are very concerned about that. And I think as we go to a larger system, we're going to start entering into that issue. I think also, as Carl mentioned and others, when you start looking at, well, where do you want to put these systems? You know, they have to be on three phase power. So that's up and down Route 10, up and down East Thetford Road, perhaps up to the skiway. So there, you know, that opens up a significant number of barriers.
Well, one of the things, if we're going to go forward with working on this, that I think we would have to do is, I thought Sam's recommendation was a good one. You know, you start with like 50 acres requirement. And you could also make, you know, pick an area. You know, just because there are all these places that could go, doesn't mean we would, we could say, you know, you know, the commercial, the western side of the commercial district plus any lot bordering on the on shoestrap, you know, so that this is, I mean, there are ways we could approach that. You know, my concern isn't that we, isn't, oh, we couldn't come up with something. My concern is that we won't have the time to really do our due diligence.
I agree with you.
And that's, you know, it's a pity the timing, you know, that Sam came to us like at the last possible moment. But that's what we're faced with. Did you, I thought I said, oh, okay. And Mark, you wanted to say something before?
Yeah, I just had a few, I guess, clarifying points. One, you know, if this project were group net metered, any Eversource customer could be a part of it. And those customers would not have to be located in Lime. They could be anywhere in the state. So
Well, so does that mean that Lime customers would not have any preferential treatment?
I think they would only have preferential treatment if the project owner, you know, committed to that. It's up to the project owner who they sell the power to.
That's correct. And as we discussed last time, many solar developers sell their projects. Kirsharj doesn't. So we would be the project owner, and we would have the ability to give first dibs to Lime residents.
And then, if I can, I just have a few more things. The community aggregation piece that Tahivi and Jim and others are working on, you can almost think of that as in like direct conflict with this project to some extent. If we go with the aggregation, that is, it's an opt out program, which means that unless someone opts out, they'll automatically be covered by it, which means all of their electricity consumption will be met by presumably 100% renewable power, in which case there really won't be any market in Lime for a big group net metering project.
In which, so in which case, like something like this project would then just, then they'd just go to the other Eversource customer?
Yeah, or it could work the other way. You know, if this project comes in and group net meters with a bunch of Lime folks, then there may not be a need for the aggregation project, because, you know, I guess what I'm saying
It could cut both ways.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And then, in terms of the 200,000 square foot thing which you're considering, I guess the question I was going to ask is, if what we're hearing is that you need roughly five acres for a one megawatt project?
I think it's four, is it right?
4.6.
Four point six?
4.6 equates to 200,000 square feet. But my understanding is that is for the entire footprint of the project, including the spacing between the rows.
That's what Sam said last time. That was a real figure.
Right, but that's not how you all are measuring, right? And so if you went with a 200,000 square foot limit, you'd really be talking about something like 10 acres or more. So in other words, I think you'd want to cut that in.
Well, I think if we go ahead with, with, you know, the modifications we'd have to make, we'd have to make the measurements consistent. As it is now, Sam is working with a real figure. That's, that 200,000 is a real figure. The 20,000 that we were working with is going to likely be much larger than 20,000 square feet.
Yeah, it would probably double roughly.
Right.
Yeah.
Rich, you want to say?
Yeah, I think that, I'm not sure where the 200,000 number comes. The 20,000, the large system is limited to 20,000 square feet of panel, which might be as much, which might occupy as much as
40,000 to 50,000, something like that.
Well, no, it's like two or three, two and a half or three acres.
Yeah.
Max.
Yeah. 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 So I just, I'm not sure where that comes from.
The 200,000?
The 200,000.
That came from Sam last time.
Those 200,000 square feet of solar panels?
If I recall correctly, that was where the fencing, every bit of, that included it. Is that right, Sam?
That's correct. Everything inside the fence line.
Yeah. So that's a real number. That's a hard number.
It's not the panels.
No, that's just a hard number.
Mark is saying it's a 10.
So, well, I guess my point is, if you were to revise the zoning amendment to try and allow this project, you wouldn't need to go up to 200,000 square feet. You could go up to, you know, 80,000 square feet or something like that, because you're only measuring the drip edge of the panels.
Well, we'd have to make it consistent one way or the other. I mean, my hesitancy with just, with, you know, if we wanted to get to 200,000, I think we should be very clear. We could just say that in the case of law, we could make what we have now as large medium, and the larges could be measured a different way. But we would just have to be very clear about the distinctions.
So, I mean, just to finish up on my thoughts on this memo is, you know, according to the folks at Catamount, with our 20,000 square foot of panel measured by the drip footprint, that that's over half a megawatt. that that's over half a megawatt facility. So it's, it's at least half as big as what Sam's doing. So, I mean, by going, going forward with the zoning ordinance, that does give people rules of the road and would allow companies such as Sam's or other mo, business models to proceed. And we could, you know, be in a position to actually give people, you know, as I say, the rules of the road so that they can come in with a project. And, and I agree with you. I, I think for us to try to, you know, identify places within this expansive corridor that we do have, that we're fortunate to have, and to address the lot coverage issue, which is really how we ended up with the twenty thousand square feet.
Right.
I think that's more than we can get done in three meetings.
Right, and, and I, I do wanna also acknowledge that there are quite, quite a few people who don't like, you know, the, I got a feedback about what, what, you know, the, what did you say, up to two and a half or, or three acres?
Yeah.
Some people are, are really not even into that. And I think we, we should, we should get a sense of it, a better sense of, of than my talking, Rich talking, or other people talking about what, what people, people want.
So, wait a second.
But the biggest issue to me is the rush.
So.
So twenty thousand square feet of panels, you're saying is half a megawatt?
Yeah.
So it really is not a huge change to allow forty thousand, which would be a megawatt, and would just.
It would be twice, yeah.
It would be twice. I mean, I don't, I don't see that, it's not an order of magnitude. It's, it's a modest, relatively modest increase in size. I mean, it's, it's double, but, but it's not like incomprehensibly larger. It's just a reasonable increase. And you said we vetted, we didn't really vet the twenty thousand beyond.
We got feedback.
We got feedback, but we didn't go to people who would actually try to do a large solar project. And so now, this is new information that I think we should integrate somehow into our thinking here.
I think, I think, I think we are.
I think that we should also think bravely and boldly and see what we can do instead of just saying impossible, we're not gonna do it.
It's fine with me to go ahead and, and to have, you know, tonight was an extra.
It would not be wasted effort.
Tonight was an extra meeting. I'm willing to put in the work, but I recognize that, having had a lot of experience with zoning amendments and with pushback on zoning amendments, that where we're not prepared and where we haven't done our due diligence, it is likely to come back to haunt us. And, and I don't feel good about putting something forth, even if I like it, that I don't feel like I've, I've put in enough time.
That's fair enough, but there's one more point, is that this twenty thousand square feet, if it's a half a megawatt, it has to be on three-phase power.
Okay.
So, I mean.
But, but that's up to, that's up to, that means that people can do smaller ones that don't need to.
Well, even Rich, Rich's project man fellow himself said a point one five megawatts is the largest one you can put on single phase.
Yeah, point one five, so people could do that.
It would be less than, less than a third of this size.
Well, I, I think we're all.
I do wanna caution, I do wanna caution drawing conclusions from Vermont projects to New Hampshire projects. That these projects, the economics of which are entirely dictated by regulatory state programs, are, are just, they're apples and oranges across state borders. You can't compare a Massachusetts solar project to a Connecticut solar project, to a Vermont solar project, to a New Hampshire solar project at this level, because their revenues are entirely dictated by state-level policy.
Okay.
So based on our experience developing projects in New Hampshire, you're, you're just not going to get projects of the two hundred to a hundred and fifty KW ilk in this group net metering community solar model. You might get some, you know, on a high school that has considerable load, or a town building offsetting on-site load, but, but not, not a community solar project such as this one.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to get a sense of the board. Is the board willing to go forward and work on this up to the deadline? At that point, we can decide whether we, we wanna go forward. I, I'm, I'm willing to do that, but I, I'm willing to do that with my eyes wide open, which is, I think, it's a long shot.
John, I, I was happy to present some of the research that I did, talking to people in town. I haven't talked about what I think, and could I take, before we.
Please.
Pull the, the board. I think in light of the fact that we, we worked really hard to come up with a modification to the master plan to talk about the importance of solar, we have to keep that in mind. The town, while they didn't pay a lot of attention to it, that is the stated policy of town and that encouraging solar development is, is the policy of the town. Number one, that's, number two, as I think about, you know, if a megawatt array covers even only two hundred homes, how many would we need to take the eight hundred homes that we have in Lime? It's not like we would need thirty of these. It would, you know, four or five would cover the lion's share of the electric energy needs of, of everyone in Lime. There's some benefit there that we're not beholden to all the other resources, or the other people that got their hand up to take money. I don't think that the max lot coverage number, the twenty-six thousand square feet that we use as a guide to come up with twenty thousand, I don't think that was deeply reasoned. I think that that was something we said, we just have, you know, we already say no more than twenty-six thousand, and, and my memory of that discussion was, let's just use twenty thousand and see where we go. I think we have evidence to suggest that that's not a good limit now, and that we should allow something considerably larger. We have feedback from, from town, people in town that, as you say, some are virulently opposed to it. I will, no, I'm not gonna, that's apparent, that's a thing, I'm not gonna get into. You're concerned about due diligence. What changes would we have to make to this language if we just said we want to allow up to five acres, up to a megawatt? Some dimensional control that the planning board actually has, has, is purview. What changes would we have to make? We got the twenty thousand square foot limit now. If we just said this many square feet, all the rest of those changes, I'll, I'll come back in a sec, Vicki. All the rest of those changes may just slide through without, without modification. So.
Okay, so.
So you come to the, so you, so your, your question is, how do we find out from the town? And what do they accept?
That's not my only question, but, but you, you.
That's, that's everything, so thank you.
So, and that's, that's a, a good thing to, to work with. So, because if we're gonna go forward, we do have to answer that question. Can we just slide then? So here are the areas that are of concern. Where? That's a big concern. And what are the limits? When we get, when we get up to this size, are there different considerations than, than with the size that, that we were working with? And, and I, I don't know the answer to that. But I guess the, the thing that jumps out at me is that we have to figure out where. And that's a challenge. Vicki, please, sorry.
I don't think it's limited to where. I think it's also that what we're thinking is, if we go beyond the twenty thousand, that there would be, need to have considerations like the ones that Sam was bringing up, like payment and move taxes, or, you know, the idea that it must be offered, you know, first to Lime residents. So that's, those are the conditions that I would wanna see worked in, and we don't have those done yet.
Yeah, and the, the other thing that, when we came up with these, the, the site plan review and lists within the amendment for how we're gonna oversee this, as I recall correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we were, we were working off, at least to some extent, Keene. And Keene, I think, had, had the small, medium, and large. And I have to go back and look at this, but I, I think that when it came to large, they had more stringent oversight than, than what we came up with. So I, I would also like to review what, I would like to go back and look at that and other towns' oversight for these much larger.
I think that's a great idea. Steel shamelessly.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, we, we do. We have and we, we do. So, so is, is the board willing to, as, as a whole, go forward on, on what might be successful or unsuccessful, basically willing to fail?
Well, I mean, I guess the question is, what's failure gonna look like? I mean.
Or zoning ordinance gets, or the amendment gets voted down, told.
No, 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 I'm not talking about that.
Oh.
No, no, I'm talking about, I mean, my, my view is that we have, we have an amendment that we can send to the town that, speaking for myself, is, is, is a, is a good start. But what I'm talking, what failure looks like is, is to, you know, as, as Rich and Hebe were saying, you know, let's go ahead and, and try this. But if, if it gets to be time where we have to set up the first hearing and we don't, we don't have, we haven't gotten enough to, I'm speaking for myself, where I don't, I don't feel like we've got a responsible amendment. I think that's, that would be the failure, that we're, we're not gonna get that large stuff this year. But we can certainly give it a shot.
Cause I mean, it, you know, this is a twenty twenty-three town meeting.
I know.
And we're trying to become, you know, green or, you know, green power by twenty thirty. It, it seems like we need to have some sort of a zoning.
Yeah, that's not a coincidence. I'm, I'm saying, we would have, we would, we can, we can send what we have. What I'm talking about is, we have that.
Okay.
I think what, you know, what Rich and Hebe were, were talking about was, you know, let's go ahead and try to see if we can get this done in time. I think it's a long shot. But if, if, if we don't get it done, we have the amendment that we worked all year on and that until this project came, everybody on this board supported a hundred percent. So I don't think there's anything wrong with that. We just got interested in, in, in new information. So what I wanna know from the board is, are you, are you, do you think it's reasonable and practical for us to go forward and try to get this done, even, you know, the, the, try to get a large array section added to our existing stuff, or, or have that accommodated? Where we have basically, let me see, one, after tonight, we have one, maximum two meetings. I mean, it's really, that's not easy. And, and we're gonna have to get legal review.
I, first of all, I think there's too many moving pieces to get it, to get it done. I mean, it's just too much.
So I'd like to get a sense of the board of, of, you know, we're not gonna go forward if we don't have a majority of, of the board thinking we should go forward.
I mean, I'm, I'm happy to go on parallel tracks.
That, yeah, that's what I'm suggesting.
Because I think that even after March, I mean, this may be something that we wanna.
Right.
Pursue beyond that, so.
So what's the harm?
So, yeah.
That's what I think.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I do, I do think it's, you know, we, we have next week's meeting, and, and at that time, at the end of that meeting, we would have to vote to send an amendment to the town and send it to legal. Unless we, you know, we added an, an extra meetings.
Well, that would be having a hearing on the twelfth of January.
Right. And then if we changed it, it would have to go back to legal, but that we should be aware of.
So, so John, what we're saying is then, we're gonna send what we have, one way or the other, to town.
Well.
I mean, assuming we don't do, we don't have time to do this other.
That's what we're deciding.
We're gonna send.
I don't, I don't see why, why we wouldn't send, you know, if we don't get this done, which is certainly a possibility, why wouldn't we send it?
Right.
Well, let me just play devil's advocate.
Oh, the devil doesn't need an advocate.
The reason we wouldn't send it is because we've got new facts that suggest to us that the, the work product that we had, which we all thought was great, doesn't work in certain circumstances that are important. And, and so we'd be passing an ordinance, or we'd be proposing an ordinance that would, that would prohibit projects that we think would be beneficial and are, that are interesting.
But those are, those are prohibited now. So these, this would allow more.
They're not prohibited because we proposed an ordinance.
No, but they're prohibited. So this, this would be a more allowing.
Yeah, I think, right. In other words, the reason for putting it up, I think, would be that if somebody came along with a project in twenty twenty-three, you know, before the twenty twenty-four town meeting, that would be possible, be made possible by the, the new amendment, then they could do. Otherwise, nobody could do anything.
Well, it's not that they couldn't do anything.
People are doing solar.
No, that it's not that they couldn't do it, they could do more than they can do now.
Yeah.
Actually significantly more. So, yeah, I, I would, I would wanna go forward with it. But are, so are we agreed that we, we will work on parallel tracks? We have that amendment as, if, if the board votes to send it forward, and the possibility that we can come up with something.
So we actually need, if we're not gonna meet until January twelfth.
Well, we're meeting next week.
Oh, I know, I know. But at that point, we're gonna be finalizing, in the ideal world, something that includes the ability to put in a larger solar than we currently have. Then we'd have the hearing on the twelfth. And then after that, we'd need to amend it basically that night and have our next hearing on February second.
We would, we would have to write the final draft on the twelfth.
After the hearing, after we got feedback.
Yes.
Right.
And then we'd have the next hearing on February second.
Right, we would have to, we would have to.
No, January twenty-sixth.
No, cause you'd need fifteen days for many, yeah, so we need to meet on, yeah, we need to meet on February second. Which we still would, would make our.
Wait a second, wait a second. You're saying because the final thing would be the twenty-sixth?
It can't be the twenty-sixth if we're changing zoning ordinance language.
How many days do you need?
You'd need fifteen.
But that would be the twenty.
No.
Seven.
No, if you can't, well, if you want, you know, Friday night. I'm just looking at meeting on Thursdays.
So you're saying we couldn't have, we couldn't have this.
It'd be the twelfth and, and February second. So we just, everyone needs to block out February second, Groundhog Day celebration here to finalize our solar. You know, but we need to have that final hearing if there are any changes. And that would then mean that any of legal, like, you know, illegal changes, we would say, oh, yeah, on the twelfth, we need to make those changes and come back on the second.
All right, so that basically gives us three meetings.
Well, no, the second, it's, it's, you know, that's it, you know, we have.
Yes, all right, so, so two meetings. Yes, all right, so two meetings.
Two meetings.
Two meetings to do all of this. Well, why not try?
Yep.
There's no reason not to try.
And that then gives everybody the Christmas holidays off. I mean, we could meet on the 22nd or the 29th, but, you know, it's like, that's pushing it, I think.
Well, why don't we, we can take that up on next week. We can see where we are and make that decision then. All right.
Next week, we're gonna have a hearing, right?
John?
Yeah.
Could I have a perspective as a voter? I don't think it is in confidence inspiring to move forward with something which you fully expect to revise in another year with new information or whatever. It's just not a strong selling point. I think that you're better off doing it now or taking the time to figure out what you want. Because really, the role of this board is to set the parameters for this sort of thing, not to pick and choose locations or vendors or all that sort of stuff.
Well, it is also to broadly pick locations where things are allowed.
Yes, but not specific locations.
No, no, no.
I'm talking about the broad parameters that would permit this. And as a voter, and I think I reflect, depending on a lot of voters, to go forward with something that is likely to change is gonna doom the whole thing to more delay and failure in the future.
Well, that's, I'll take that point.
Yeah, I mean, you're close. As you say, why not do it right? It takes more time to do it. But if you pass this current ordinance and then a year later, say, well, we thought about it some more and done more research, now we're proposing this, I think that dooms that.
Well, and not only that, but when you go forward with this ordinance, you're gonna have people who are upset about it because they want to be able to do a project with Kierzage or something along those lines, who are gonna come up and say, this ordinance is bad because it won't let me do this beneficial project and you're inviting some political adversity, maybe.
I mean, maybe, maybe that's right. I mean, I'll definitely, you know, for myself, I'll think about that. But I don't see it as a contradiction. Better is better. And I think we can be absolutely transparent and open about it and say, we have a good amendment and we're looking at expanding it. So if you, you know, if you want to vote it down because we're gonna be making it better, you know, that's, that's up to the voter. But I don't see it as a contradiction to present something that's, I think, quite good on what we haven't even all, I mean, who knows what this will lead to? So, I mean, we don't know what will come out of this. But we know what we have and that was, that was based on a lot of good, hard work.
I don't have a problem with going forward with what we've already agreed to and coming back next year with a well-reasoned idea for how to accommodate the larger arrays, especially given the fact that we may have more reason to be supporting them if people are getting into the community power and that that would actually create a larger base of support for larger arrays with more people kind of buying into that idea. So I don't think that we failed if that's what we end up doing. But that's what we decide next week.
No, I don't either. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and try to raise this thing. Sam, did you want to say anything else? Thank you for sticking around, if you're still there.
He's still here?
I'm still here, my pleasure. How can we be of use as you move forward? Would it be helpful for us to actually propose, you know, a red line of the draft ordinance? So you can see just how small the change would need to be?
You mean your, your view of it?
Yes, our view of it, correct, of course.
I don't know, how does that strike?
Seems fine, the deal, shamelessly.
Yeah, you know what?
Sure.
Question is how to get it to us, because is David out?
David's gonna be back in, I think, Monday, isn't he? Isn't David Condon, do you know him?
I do not know, but I can check with him now.
Well, Jordan told me today he would come back Monday.
Okay, so I think he'll be back. Yeah, so, so, so send it to, you know what, send it to David and to me. I think, didn't I give you, did I give you my email?
You did. What's your email, John? I'll email it to you.
Oh, God, I don't, I don't, I'll email it to you.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'll get all sorts of angry, everybody who's been waiting to send angry emails will do so.
Do you have my email, John?
I think I have it on, yes, I think so.
Okay.
All right, yeah, that would be helpful. And everybody else, think about, you know, what they would.
Well, I think what we need to do is focus. I mean, you know, actually, how large and where? And, you know, conditions to allow those things. And also, I think we need to really talk about, are we going to allow greater incursions into any of the conservation overlay districts? Or is, are the larger arrays also going to be following the exact same rules that other structures do? And we've got, talking to that, fortunately, this Kierzage project, they say that they can fit it in without using more than 25% of the ag soil. So it's not a question there, but just as a, we should make a determination about how we feel about that for other projects.
Any other comments or questions? Does anybody feel like dancing? I don't know, you know, what else have we got?
Eat cookies?
Cookies, yeah. Yeah, no, you want to say something?
I think all of us got a very late email this afternoon from David.
From David, yeah, I barely had time to read.
He had some very specific changes, which I haven't been able to digest.
Yeah, I haven't.
I did not receive that, actually.
All right.
So one of you guys get forward.
All right, I'll try to remember forward to you and if I, if I don't, remind me. Rich, who's this from? David Robey.
Oh, David Robey, okay.
You didn't get it?
No.
You didn't get it?
No.
Let me look at the...
Oh, it's to T R C R E X X.
Yeah, that's Tim.
Oh, okay, and Vicky, and me, and David Robbins, and John Stappler.
Oh, so it should be going to...
I haven't seen it because I wasn't at work today.
It should be gone, so I will send it.
Okay, yeah.
Who else, you three didn't get it?
John, why don't you just send it to all of us?
I'll send it to everybody.
He probably didn't have your email.
Whatever. Anyway, he sent it to, I haven't had time to read it, but, so everybody should read it and then have their comments.
Did any of you did get it, you know, comfortable sort of?
Summarize.
Maybe like a stab at...
Yeah, he had, he had very specific, I mean, I just glanced at it, but he had very specific suggestions for like rewording things, but that's...
So it's wordsmithing?
Wordsmithing, mostly, I think.
Yeah, mostly.
I didn't look at it that closely.
I think he felt the 20,000 square feet was kind of large.
Great. That's significant. Well, anyway, I mean, anyway, we got those, people, people should review it and be able to address it at the next meeting. And shall we shut this thing down? Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. You, you took the minute, so you'll get those to David. Let me just, I wrote myself some notes. Make sure we got everything in, we did the minutes. Okay, I think, I think we're set. So barring anything, I'd like to make a motion to, oh, yeah. Well, how do you suggest, how do you suggest we do it?
I don't know.
Well, okay, let's go over that. Let's go over what we want to, we know we want to look into. We need to deal with locations. I'm trying to remember things we said tonight, you know, possibly 50-acre limits. Maybe go back and look at Keene's large reviews.
Benefits, it is, it is for people on the...
What do you mean?
Well, how would people...
Did we...
Well, the two-minute little taxes idea and... Otherwise, they'd be exempt. And then you somehow offer to lime residents. I don't see how we can make that a necessary thing if, you know, say we get five of these projects and the fifth one, everybody's already signed up and there's no more people. Doesn't mean it shouldn't be allowed to go, I guess, but...
Well, right, but I think we kind of touched on that where if that happened, then they would just divert to...
Right, right.
To other big time.
Yeah, or the town decides to go forward with the...
Exactly, but I don't want that to, if they offer it, nobody, and like, oh, say it's a company everybody hates, so nobody wants to do business with that. I mean, it's, they should still be able to provide the power to somebody else.
Put the power into the...
Right, but it should be offered to, you know, lime for the ability to get those, but it's for lime.
Okay, anything else?
So we had the incursion into conservation.
Conservation, I mean, conservation, what are they, overlays? Districts.
And then I guess Carl's point was the screening?
Well, what was that, Carl? That you were concerned with, with screening?
No, I never mentioned screening, sorry.
Okay, well, did it be out of view or not?
It's really location and that involves visibility.
Okay, well, location, you know, can change, you know, if all the trees are cut down, the location could be not a good location for you. So the visibility is something, I mean, we need to make provisions that, if that location was screened by trees, that then they couldn't cut down the trees. So we need to, you know, so the screening, I think, is something you were hitting at anyway.
Certainly, other people that I spoke to were concerned about visibility right now, yeah.
And then I guess I'm just concerned about lot coverage also.
Okay. Yeah.
So materials for next time, we'll be getting stuff from Sam. And somebody should take, somebody should take the lead on finding Keene's materials, so...
I think we all have it, you might not have...
I might not.
You might not have. So...
So Keene zoning ordinance, I think it's in there?
Yeah.
Take a look.
I think David has forwarded it.
Yeah, I'll try and find it, but barring that...
Google is your friend.
Yeah, Google, you go to the Keene zoning ordinance and then under solar.
It's quite recent, their most recent update. It's like last year or the year before.
So what am I sending? I'm sending David Robey's email to everybody.
The rules about meetings are that you can disseminate stuff, people just can't answer you.
Yeah.
You're not supposed to send stuff.
It should, yeah, so what, what our, what our policy is, is everything goes to David.
Right. I'm just saying, it doesn't contravene any rule, any state rule for that to happen. That's all I'm saying. In, if David's not around, you can send stuff out.
Well, let me just say that David is not around, so I'm gonna send this.
Thank you.
But when David is around, everything should go through him.
It's certainly more efficient.
Yeah.
And then it becomes public record, right?
Yes, exactly.
Article 16 in the Keene ordinance is the one we'll look at.
Thank you.
Okay, so everybody's got their...
Nick called the land development code, you know, the zoning ordinance, so...
Do not be deceived by the different words. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to eat these cookies and to close down the meeting and to thank our public for coming. We really appreciate it.
And Sam, too, thanks for coming.
Yeah, and Sam, thank you very much for hanging around and helping us.
Thank you all, we'll see you next Thursday.
Okay.
Take care.
All right, we can shut down the...
Does somebody have a second?
Oh, yes, I will second that.
There's a second, all those who want, who, yeah, okay.
I just know...
And it's, and it's K 20...
Eight twenty-five.
Yeah, close enough.